So in this last June 30th, 2020 election, you had Robert Espinoza, who's gonna be the brand-new county commissioner come January 1st, 2021. There was an open seat with Lawrence Pacheco. Lawrence Pacheco wasn't going to run for reelection, so therefore that left an open seat. It was a three-way race between a guy named Rael and a guy named Doro, Joe Doro Sanchez. Rael's gonna get 336 votes, Doro got 186 votes, and Robert Espinoza is going to win the district, the number one, the first district, the county commissioner, first district of Castillo County with 555 votes. So Robert Espinoza is gonna take, I believe Lawrence Pacheco's seat. So that's, I'm gonna analyze who Robert Espinoza is, I want to make a couple comments about Doro and Rael and what this means for Castillo County. Elections, this signals a change, this signals that we're gonna do things differently. Regardless, it was gonna be a change anyways, cuz it was an open seat. Now Colorado actually set a new turnout rate record with the June 30th, 2020 election, so that all that hullabaloo bullshit about, you know, written ballots not being fair. Colorado's been doing written ballots for years, and we've been, you know, kicking ass and taking names. Kentucky's elections suck, you have to go on Election Day during a workday, push a button with a bunch of people, but here in Colorado, you get the ballot and you could look at it for a month and research the whole thing, turn it in, and then, you know, that's better, more thoughtful, it's better for the citizen, everything about it is better. So in Colorado, we set a new turnout rate record, so that's fantastic. Some information about Castillo County, the demographics, there's a lot of poverty here. 21% of the families are poor, that's one out of five families, one out of five families in Castillo County are poor. 27% of the population, that's over one out of four people are poor in Castillo County, and 32% under 18 years of age. 32%, 3 out of 10 kids are poor in Castillo County. 23% of those age 65 and over, so that's two out of 10, and one out of five. One out of five of all the elderly in Castillo County have been given the poverty death sentence. This is a systemic, habitual, decades-long problem. This is a major, huge problem, poverty is, and it needs to be addressed head-on. You're not gonna even, you know, come close to putting a dent in poverty unless you take it head-on. So that's, you know, unfortunate, that's the situation that Castillo County has to deal with. The population, 30, about, you know, 3,500, in 2000, the 2000 census says that the population was 3,663. So not many people, you could actually know everybody and their kids and, you know, their second and third cousins and their grandmothers and their grandparents and all their friends and neighbors and their dog's name and every single thing. So you can, you know, really get, that's manageable, 3,663 compared to the city of Pueblo, 100,000. That's, you know, they have 100,000 people in Pueblo, but here in Castillo County, 3663, that's, uh, you know, that's manageable. 61, now here's some demographics, it says that the Castillo County is 61% white. Less than 1% black, 2.5% Native American, 1% Asian, 29% from other races, and 5% from two or more races. 5%? I feel like there's probably a lot of people that's from two or more races. 61% is white, and then the Hispanic or Latino of any race percentage was 68%. So according to the 2000 census, Castillo County has 61% white people and 68% Hispanic. How is that possible? That's over, you know, 120%? 120, that's not possible. And then how come there's no black folks? And 2.5% Native American, that seems like very small. Hispanic is Native American, so and 1% Asian, we got more Asians than black folks here? How come, you know, why has Castillo County not been conducive for black folks to stay and live here? And 5%, I bet most of us are mutts anyways. I got 11% black blood in me, and so therefore 5% are from two or more races? Bullshit. If 60% are white and 68% are Hispanic, that means the people that responded to the census of 2000 said that they were both Hispanic and white, therefore they are two races. So that's, the majority of the population's, you know, two or more races, but 5% admitted to it. So yeah, interesting numbers about the demographics here, right? No black folks, all white, there's so much white Hispanic, so many brown white people here, it's about 130%. There's, how many brown white people? 130%. That's what the US Census of 2000 tells us about Castillo County. This is actually a very progressive county, there's a lot of Democrats, at least, there's Canales in Castillo County are like the poor twins who fight it out for being the poorest. No, I'm the poorest, no, I'm the poorest. And one's run by Republicans, the other is run by Democrats, so the two parties are, you know, responsible for all the poverty around here. Now the last Republican candidate for president to carry Castillo County was Calvin Coolidge in 1924. So Canales, you know, go with the Republicans, you just don't give a shit about poor people, and then, you know, the Democrat, progressive Democrats haven't really figured out how to make sure we're all, you know, in, you know, in prosperity, swimming in all the luxurious prosperity of the government class. So Calvin Coolidge in 1924, that was the last Republican. So that's actually kinda interesting, to be honest with you. 1924, that's Calvin Coolidge, you know, he was stupid, boring, dumb Calvin Coolidge, his major quote is "The business of America is business," okay? You got one, you got one thing right in your entire, what, four, eight years, was he re-elected? The Castillo County backed Calvin Coolidge again? But 1924, he was the last person, Calvin Coolidge was the last person to actually visit Cuba before Barack Obama did it. But, uh, okay, so Calvin Coolidge, 1924. And we're in 2020, so nearly in 100 years, Castillo County has not voted for the Republican candidate for president. So that means Castillo County is badass, awesome, fantastic, these are wonderful people, they know what's going on, they're smart, intelligent, progressive, so we need to pay attention to what Castillo County, what, uh, Castillo County is all about. So Joe Doro Sanchez, right, so Lawrence Pacheco, he's gonna be, you know, for six months, he's still the District 1 County Commissioner, but after June, or January 1st, 2021, Robert Espinoza's going to, Robert Espinoza's gonna beat Rael and Doro. No, Joe Doro, Rael, Rael seemed to me like he was mainly off-gritter, and when I had talked to him, I think that he had thought that maybe I knew that and I was confronting him, but no, I'm just out of the blue, you know, just calling my politicians to see what kind of representatives they're gonna be for the community, and, um, and so yeah, it wasn't, I had no idea that he was, you know, off-gritter, he was just off the off-gritter. He was anti-off-gritter. And so Rael was mainly off-gritter, that was his campaign, so that would be the same direction that the county court went in two years ago. And since he wasn't elected, that means the people around, you know, actually of Castillo County want to go in a different direction. They wanna go in a different direction. Doro got 186 votes, and Doro, I like Doro, so let's talk a little bit about who Doro is, because all those ideas, you know, in the great pool of ideas, the best ideas should prevail. So Joe Doro had some good ideas. Now Joe Doro, he takes care of the dump in Fort Garland, so he is, you know, part of the government right now, and I think that the dump is probably county, maybe privately-owned. So that's an enterprise, right there, anyways, four years, okay, so, uh, he was in a city council in the late 1970s in Arapaho County, four years in city council. He had, uh, got a job in maintenance in high school, and, uh, he worked at Lockheed and Martin Aerospace for a year and a half. So, you know, he's done some impressive stuff, right now he's taking care of the dump, right, the landfill or the incinerator or whatever, the dump of Fort Garland, right? He takes care of the trash of Fort Garland. Now, planning and zoning, he had mentioned that they go out to the houses and they get into arguments with people, like that's what, is that all they're doing? Just going out and just arguing with people and then, you know, trying to get them for like dumb petty shit? Just get into arguments. So in Denver, he mentioned, so there's several things that I wanna mention about Joe Doro, cuz he's, um, he has a lot of great things about him. So in Denver, he had said that there was a programmer in Sheridan specifically, so I guess that's up near Denver, but he said for young adults to get trained in EMS fire and police, and then once their training was complete, then they were hired. So he wanted to do that, right? Bring jobs in, bring young adults into the current EMS fire police power apparatus, Sharon, Colorado, Sheridan, Colorado. So this is fantastic. So Joe Doro has experience, Joe Doro has experience with planting seeds and then watching the community flourish. So he said when he was, you know, in Sheridan, Colorado, I guess he was, I don't know, the director of all this other stuff, the director of the police department, director of the parks department, was the director of HUD, and I don't know if it was Sheridan, Sheridan, Colorado where he was the city councilman, but it was in the 1970s. So in 1970s, Sheridan, Colorado only had a population of 6,000. Today, they got a population of 18,000, so they have tripled their population in Sheridan, Colorado. And he said that the city had a bunch of properties, a bunch of vacant properties, just like San Luis, people didn't know what to do with it, so they just started selling the property, and then people bought the property and then it just started flourishing. He said businesses were starting all over the place, and everybody had built it up, so when they went back, there was no more vacant buildings, not a single vacant building on any block, not in South Santa Fe Drive, not Louisville Boulevard, not in Bellevue. So Sheridan, Colorado, because of the work that Joe Doro Sanchez did, it helped to create, you know, to flourish, it helped their economy. So he knows what, you know, what to do, he's done this type of work, so he kept on telling me he's gonna go in there and see what I can do. I'm gonna go in there and I'm gonna say, you know, what seems to be the problem? I think that's a fantastic approach. So while Joe Doro Sanchez struck me as a simple man, you know, Leonard Skinner said that's what his, you know, mother told him to be, and not simple dumb, but simple genius, you know, rank and file simple, mostly goes along with the leadership, but he has notions about how shit's supposed to work. He got 186 votes, 186 people believed in him, also saw a sign out of his, and for me, it was between Doro and Espinoza. So he's got some charisma, right, and charm. Joe Doro Sanchez put himself out there, how many people didn't do that? How many people would never do that? And so I can give Joe Doro Sanchez all the credit in the world. If it was just Rael and Doro, I would've, you know, voted for Doro. Doro notions were right, his promise of, we'll just see what happens, I'm gonna get in there and we'll see what happens. That's easy to keep, but it actually kept me at bay with getting, you know, to specific details regarding his policies, so maybe that's, you know, just some, uh, you know, sort of, uh, politics speak to get around and have an ask question or answer questions, but it's very genuine and honest. You know, when I get in there, I'm gonna see what's going on, and, uh, and all these questions with the, you know, District 3 race and District 1, what is qualified? When it comes to what is qualified, do you have to have a college degree? Do you need to be, you know, have four years of communication? Do you need, uh, you know, a communications degree? Is that what it takes to, you know, be a good representative of the people? I think, no, I don't think that's even, you know, I think that that helps, but I don't think it's necessary, and if you're brilliant and you don't care about the people, I want a good person, I want a good man with honorable intentions, or an honorable man with good intentions, a progressive fighter, a people's champion, one who wants to move Castillo County forward towards progress. And I think that's what we got with Espinoza, it's what we were getting, you know, that's what, Doro, he was progressive, Espinoza was progressive, and Rael was regressive. And so I got high hopes for Robert Espinoza, he was warm and friendly, and he helped me out with my specific problems, he was kinda saying, okay, I'm not gonna talk about policy, I'm gonna say, what is up, you got, you know, you got a problem that needs solving, what is it? So with Robert Espinoza, I know that we got a good man, a good man who believes in goodness, who does good, is a good Christian, right? He's, he's a Christian in a good way, not like these arrogant religious assholes who don't give a goddamn fuck about others, but a Christian who actually gives a shit, a Christian who's actually good, does good, honors good, respects good, this is rare to find. So life is complicated, like what the fuck is a black hole? I think if we figure out what a black hole is, we'll understand, you know, the entire galaxy, but while life is complicated, it's also very, very simple, right? You start out with basic building blocks and you go from there. Some people overthink, other folks underthink, we just need balance. So while life can be a lot of times chaotic and complicated, it's also very simple and calm, and, you know, we all need Maslow's hierarchy of needs, food, water, clothing, shelter, oxygen, security, self-actualization, so life is very, very simple. Now when it comes to Rael's campaign, he was, you know, anti-off-gritters. Now this is ridiculous, this is really dumb, this is very, very stupid, because he's going to deprive himself of meeting, you know, good people. Off-gritters are just like anybody else when it comes to, you know, local folks, immigrants, when it comes to the off-gritters that I know, they're awesome, they're awesome. Most off-gritters are just regular folks trying to build themselves a life, build themselves a house, a home, get themselves wife, community, build a community, you know, build themselves, give themselves, you know, a little piece of the pie. And all the while, they're having to fight against the elements, so they're taking, you know, basically crap, terrible land, and fighting against the wind and the rain and the dry conditions, no water, no electric, no internet, and fight against the elements. So off-gritters are awesome, you know, they're strong, they're, um, tenacious, and they have, you know, they're ambitious. So most off-gritters that I know rock, there are some that are terrible, most off-gritters rock. And so when it comes to Lawrence Rael saying that he's not gonna allow the police to patrol the whole county, cuz I want a county court that represents all Castillo County, not just Blanca and San Luis, I want a Castillo County that represents the San Luis ranches, San Luis Valley ranches that are near Blanca, and Chama and Mesita and Herosa and Blanca too, and, uh, not just, you know, not just San Luis and Blanca, do cover the, but make sure Fort Garland and Garcia and Santa Casio, San Francisco, La Valley, Rio Grande Ranchos and La Vete, San Pedro and San Pablo. So I want San Pedro and San Pablo, the whole damn county represented, I don't want anybody to be left out, and what's it take, you know, how much gasoline does it take to just drive around? So when it comes to Lawrence Rael saying that some people are not, you know, worthy, who lives in Castillo County, are citizens, are voters, but there's, there are some people, there are some voters in Castillo County who are not worthy of EMS fire and police protection. And that's, you know, concern with new immigrants, when you have immigrants, they put a strain on social services, but I feel like, you know, you can't solve every single body, you know, every person's problem, but you can make a presence, and that's what they do in Louisville, that's what they did in Denver, that's Robert White. Check out Robert White, he's the police chief of Louisville and Denver, and I'm not sure where he's at today, but Robert White said, you have a city of a million, you can't solve a million people's problems, but what you can do is be everywhere at all times. So if there is a problem, you know, you're there, you also are watching and you're on, you know, on the scene. So you're ready. So when Lawrence Rael will sit there and say that he's not gonna give, you know, the Rio Grande Ranchos or Herosa or Mesito the police protection that they're entitled to, then it's a, you know, the angels of the valley are going to leave, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. If we don't have an actual true blue crime-fighting organization, the police, we need to defund the police, the police are terrible, well, we need our crime fighters, and the police, for some reason, they got out of business of fighting crime. And so if the police cannot patrol the entire county of Castillo County, then the good, honorable, lawful, peaceful people, the angels of the San Luis Valley, the angels of southwest Castillo County will go, and they will leave, and only the criminal off-gritters will remain. And if Lawrence Rael was truly worried about the bad stuff that the new immigrants bring in, yeah, you can like, you know, put, what, $500, charge $500 if you're gonna build a shed, you can go ahead and do that, double all the rates when it comes to improving your property. But if he was truly worried about all the bad stuff, new immigrants would bring, and then he'd be happy to have the police patrol the entire county and to root out the criminal element, to nip it in the bud. Why sit there and play with the thing? Why let, you know, angels of the valley have to endure and take the bullshit of people that only wanna harm others? Why do that? How about this, nip it in the bud, stamp out the criminal element, and then leave the angels to be their angelic selves? So I want a county court that represents all Castillo County, not just the two major cities, but every single, you know, town and village, every single ditch, every single, if you live in Castillo County and you're a citizen, then of course you're entitled to all of the services of the county. So Robert Espinoza, he believes that, he believes that if you live in the county, you get, you know, he also believes that the Castillo County police, they do a great job, he says that you'd respond, they would respond to you if you called them, which is true. Uh, Robert Espinoza, he also knew that Castillo County was one of the first counties in Colorado. So who is Robert Espinoza and what direction are we gonna go in? I don't know the whole man, I only know him by one conversation, but it was about 20-minute conversation, and that says something to me, he picked up the phone, he talked to me, Lawrence Rael talked to me too, and so did Doro. There was, uh, one, you know, criticism about basically all the races, there was no planks or platforms for any of the candidates. Alonzo Payne, he had like three planks to his platform, so three whole planks, but, uh, I like Alonzo Payne, but he was the, you know, most progressive when it came to actually having a platform that actually had, you know, specific items that he wanted to do. So all these guys, including Robert Espinoza, ran on, hey, man, you know, I'm a good man, I'm a good guy, you know me, you know me. And so it wasn't, I'm gonna fight poverty, it's not, I'm gonna crack down on crime, it was just, hey, guy, it's a cult of personality thing, and so I feel like you could do both, right? You could say, hey, I'm a great man, but I also have, you know, I believe in this policy and that policy, and there were specific policy planks that Robert Espinoza believed in. So, um, Robert Espinoza, he was a pastor of some sort, he calls himself a man of God, and so he actually, you know, I, religious people, I, first I wanna know, do you believe in reality, do you believe in science? So, you know, I don't understand religious people, we look at death differently, you think that there's a glorious place that people go to when they die, I don't think that. So he works at jail ministries, he's trying to reform the jails, he works at the community center where they got a food bank and Care Share, and so he's been, you know, doing good things around the community. So he's a Christian who actually believes in goodness, right? So, uh, this Christian who believes in goodness, he wants a homeless shelter for homeless veterans, so there isn't a homeless shelter around here. He was telling me a story about how there's some men in Castillo County who don't wanna get a job, and they just wanna survive, so they'll just commit a petty crime so they can get three hots and a cot in jail, so they can get three square meals, a roof over their head and a bed to sleep in. So at least they're living, right? So I recommended, why don't we get a homeless shelter? He didn't say, okay, let's get a homeless shelter, but he did say, let's get a homeless shelter for veterans. And yeah, I would say that there is, I think we're all, you know, we're all worthy, so just because, you know, whether you fought in Vietnam or Iraq or, you know, wherever, I don't know if that actually would entitle you to more or less, but veterans generally, you know, put their lives on the line for their country, they did something honorable, they did something good. So he wants a homeless shelter for homeless veterans, this is a good thing, this is one of his policy planks. He also believes in job creation and job retention, so he's got a backstop, right? Not just job creation, but we gotta make sure that the jobs we got here, we keep. And he was talking about paying the EMTs a little bit more money. For 35 years, he's been an EMT, certified, they've given out scholarships, but he's saying that right now, they're being paid 13 to 14 dollars an hour, when Alamosa pays 20 bucks an hour. So, you know, EMT's trying to get them more money, 13, 14, that's a good-ass job around here, so, you know, maybe they should go to Alamosa and let someone else get, anyway, so this is, you know, Stephen Romero doesn't actually believe that, he's, you know, Stephen Romero's nice, warm, educated man, but he's wrong about this, the government has to create jobs, he, they have to create jobs. In America, you work or die, that is our, you know, motto, that's capitalism. And so if our government is not creating jobs or seeding small businesses into fruition, then what the hell the government, they're basically leaving us to die. They're leaving us to die in America, land of the thief, home of the slave, in the United States of America, the richest country in the world, we have to work or die, those are our options, or start a small business somehow miraculously, get a million dollars, right? Like Donald Trump, just get that, he only had a million dollar loan. So if the government isn't working on getting new industry here, seeding small businesses, which are the number one creator of new jobs or other job creation ideas, then that government is letting their people die, which means we should let that government die. We work or die here in this capitalistic system, and we need a government who understands this basic understanding of American life. You gotta create jobs, cuz that's your main, that's your main job. Make sure we all got jobs so we all can live, and if we all don't got jobs, and we want jobs, then that means our government is failing us. And so yes, I believe Robert Espinoza is in favor of job creation, job retention, and he wants to create a homeless shelter for homeless veterans. So he recommended, we talked about a whole bunch of stuff, he said military taught him respect, the world needs more love and respect, he says he's not a racist, treat people based on their character, not skin color, we need to stop judging folks on their roughness, see the light within them. He encourages local men to get jobs, get off the merry-go-round, be men of courage, and he says that there's a poor and desperate and criminal culture here, also laziness, lots of drugged-out, single mothers, and says while Chicanos from Nicaragua work hard, he says that there's, the Chicanos from here, there's a culture of laziness, so he wants to have a cultural change. He wants us to have more respect for one another, he wants to make sure, you know, basically that we're doing the best that we can do. And he also pointed out, let's see, I hope he gets it, right? I hope he gets, let's keep the good habits, chuck out the bad. Because we got a Robert Espinoza in there, we're headed in a different direction, we're not just gonna hit the off-gritters like doubling the rates and, you know, you're, maybe the local people might wanna build a shed too. Now local people gotta pay $500 if they buy or build a shed, I mean, that's crazy, you're hurting yourself by trying to hurt the off-gritter. And so, you know, consider land reform, 60,000 plots, 3,500 people, that's 17 plots per local person here. So if you could get the local poor folks on their own land, raise their own, be independent, be their own person, build their own houses, be a better citizen, then they could, you know, stop resenting other off-gritters who are poor and desperate, create an agrarian society here. I think that the point of planning and zoning shouldn't be to stop folks from living, it's to have an orderly development, not to stop folks from living. So that's what I want, and that's what I, you know, the people of Castillo County 20 years ago, you know, when they did planning and zoning, that's what they wanted, an agrarian society, a happy valley, with a bunch of, you know, nice, lawful, decent, moral, good, hard-working comrades, you know, just a great neighborhood, just a fantastic place for anybody and everybody to want to come to, to live and to work and play. So there you go, that's Robert Espinoza, we're gonna get ourselves a homeless veteran, a veteran's homeless shelter hopefully, and hopefully get some new jobs and job retention. We got a good man, hopefully the system doesn't corrupt. Hopefully, the system doesn't corrupt.